Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you have a hat on, please remove it for the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to our Tuesday morning meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. It is March nineteenth. My name is Andy Hunthausen. To my left Commissioner Tom Rolf.
Good morning, sir.
To his left Flo Liston will be taking care of us today. Greg McNally, our Director of Planning and Community Development. To my right Commissioner Candace Payne. Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Nico Hash, Deputy County Attorney, and Roger Balt, our Chief Administrative Officer. There is a sign in sheet in the front as well as agendas. We'd like everyone to sign in if you would please prior to leaving today. So we have a good record of who's attended our public meeting. Thank you very much and welcome to everyone. Glad you're here. Mr. Balt, I turn to you for our consent action items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. You have two items to consider under consent today. I'll read them into the record for your consideration. Item two A is the yearly road mileage certification update. Staff recommends approval of that item. And Eric Spengenberg is here in the audience with us today as well. Item two B is approval of $25,000 in funding on a reimbursement basis to Helena Housing Authority for her fair market rent reevaluation project. Staff recommends approval of that item as well. Thank you Commissioners. That's all the consent items.
Thank you very much, Mr. Balt. Commissioners, any questions? Hearing none. Is there any public comment on the consent action items? The consent action items, any public comment? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to accept the consent action items, two A and B, as explained by Mr. Balt.
Second.
Move to second and approve consent as presented. Further discussion. Thank you. All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Next item on the agenda is the Bureau of Land Management update. And I'm sorry to tell you that we're going to have to postpone that because Ms. Babcock had a family emergency and had to reschedule. So we're going to be rescheduling the Bureau of Land Management update. And they were going to talk to us about Bureau of Land Management activities around the Helena area. So we'll hear that at another time. However, it is on the agenda, so we will take any public comment on that item. If there is any public comment, any public comment on the Bureau of Land Management update. All right, look for that on a future agenda. Commissioners, no action is necessary. And we're going to postpone that until Ms. Babcock is available again, probably in the next few weeks. All right, move on to the next item on the agenda. Grant awards to Lucen Clark County from the Montana Department of Commerce. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. Ann McCauley, Director of Grants and Purchasing. Before you today is a grant award from the Montana Department of Commerce for a Community Development Block Grant or CDBG, Public Facilities Grant. This is a grant that's going to be subawarded as a sub recipient to the Craig Water and Sewer District for $401,000. The work to be accomplished under this grant includes an upgrade to the Augusta Lift Station, which is in Craig, and installation of a low pressure sewer collection system in the Barnes Lane area. Match in the amount of $525,000 will be provided for this grant, and that's through grants already secured by the Water Sewer District. And the period of performance is December 13 of '23 through September 30 of '27. Though we're anticipating this project to be completed probably by the end of 2025. Happy to take any questions. Staff recommendation is to approve. And I'd also like to note that we have a couple of members from the Craig project here. Matt Mudd, who's Great West Engineering Lead Engineer, and Jason Crocker, who is a board member for the Craig Water Sewer District.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Miss McCauley at this time before we invite our guests up? We'd love to hear about the project. So of course, gentlemen, so if you'd want or both of you'd like to come up, that'd be great. We are excited. I am excited about this grant and accepting this grant award. But I think for the public's interest, just put it in context where we've been and where we're going here. So if you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Jason Crocker. I'm Vice Chair of the Craig Sewer Board. Thank you for hearing from us again this morning. I've seen a couple, a couple of times. So as you guys know, we've been working very hard on this project and we really appreciate you guys helping us with this grant. Basically, it is to take care of some septic tanks that are still currently in the ground over in the Barnes Lane area. The thing with the Barnes Lane area is it's right next to the Missouri River. We've kind of hit a point where if something was to go wrong down in that area with the sewer, it could have a direct effect on the Missouri River as long, along with our community. As you guys know, we're an extremely small community. So having the funds in order to do this is been something that we've been working hard on. And with you guys helping us, we'll be able to achieve the goal. I guess that's... Do you have any questions for me personally, or?
We, we might. I don't know if there's anything further you want to add, and then we'll ask questions maybe after the end here.
Yeah, Matt Mudd, Great West Engineering. I'm the engineer on the project. So yeah, just I'll provide a, just a high level general update on the project. As mentioned earlier and explained that the scope of the project is to abandon or partially remove existing septic tanks. And then there's kind of a several pumps in a step pump system. Those will be abandoned and disposed. Then the project will put in a low pressure system. That'll be much more efficient. And then all the sewage will be passing downstream. The current project is in the contracting phase of both grants and engineering. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Then as mentioned, there's match grants, the DNRC grant, and the MSEP grant are coming together and being contracted now. Then CDBG would be next. We'll work with the county to meet startup conditions and environmental conditions there. Once engineering is in place, then the first phases would be preliminary engineering, surveying, and doing those kinds of things, all by preparing the necessary permits, floodplain permits and those kinds of things. And then the ultimate goal is to bid early next year. So have it be a 2024 construction project.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Mudd. And I guess I'll just add maybe a... Either both can give us a 30-second history lesson. But essentially, over the last decade or so, the entire community of Craig proper has been transitioned from individual systems to a community system and all of that with the resort tax and the other things. But the its own plant in a community drain field and all of that kind of thing that has happened. Just a quick note on all of that so that we have a little bit of history here for those that might be interested. Okay? Any other questions? Either one of you, if you want to...
You want to talk about the history?
Yeah, I can.
Just real quick, it's not...
Okay.
Kind of want to put this in context.
Sure. Well, as most of you know, Craig is a small community and it's just blown up as far as the tourism that we have as far as the fly fishing industry. It's kind of world renowned blue ribbon fly fishing house. So with the influx of the amount of people that have come into our community, we found that we had a need for sewer systems. So a lot of people in our community came together and were able to get a foundation built in order to do the sewer system, which we have put in. We have a resort tax of 4% that we collect from all the businesses and VRBOs and everything to help supplement the money that we need in order to run our sewer system. So like, as you said, it has been... I think we've been live for six years now, but we've been working on the project for about 12 years. And so, yes, Craig itself, the township of Craig, does have the flowing and working sewer system. So the Barnes Lane is the last piece of it. Right now, we could take the gray water from Barnes Lane, but we can't take the black. So by being able to get this grant and that award, we're going to be able to get rid of those tanks, like I was saying before, and run all of the sewage that we need to our plants. And so part of that Augusta Lift Station upgrade that you're talking about is in order to get it up to snuff so that it can handle the sewage that will be coming from the Barnes Lane area.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Payne?
I, I have a question. Why is the Augusta Lift Station in Craig?
Well, it's on Augusta Street. So we just thought calling it Augusta Lift Station on Augusta Street might just be...
It caused untold consternation with me because I'm...
I, I thought... I think that's a great, great question, Commissioner.
When I was reading this material yesterday, I, I thought maybe our fearless leader, Ann McCauley, who almost never makes an mistake. I thought, oh, I caught her on this one. This is not Augusta. I was wrong. Okay, that was the end of my question. Thank you.
Yes, and we want to say big thanks to Ann McCauley and to Matt Mudd and their organization. Without these guys, we wouldn't be anywhere where we are today. So thank you to everybody and Commissioners as well.
Thank you. Mr. Mudd, anything else? Commissioner Rolf, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think we've covered it pretty well.
All right, well, round us back to this is opportunity to accept a grant award to Lucen Clark County from Department of Commerce is what we're talking about today. So gentlemen, thank you very much. I think we're done with questions. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, Commissioners. Is there a motion on the grant award?
I move to approve the grant award as presented by Ann McCauley.
Second.
Move to second, accept the grant award as presented. Thank you very much. Commissioners, anything further?
I just, I just...
Commissioner Rolf?
I just want to commend the people of Craig for taking a really difficult problem and working for over a long period of time to, to get it solved. And with our Grants Department helping, helping find ways to get it done. You folks just kept working at it and kept working at it. And it looks like it's, we're going to have a very good outcome.
Commissioner Payne?
Yes. I want to make sure everyone understands that this is not just about the city of Craig. The Missouri River impacts many people. And my, my husband, you know, is a fishing guide and a boat builder. And I spend quite a bit of time up there on that river. And there are times when the river turns kind of greenish. And I think it may have something to do with effluents seeping into the river. Anyone who cares about the Missouri River, whether they live in Craig or Great Falls or any place upstream, maybe Helena, we all need to take care of our river. So thank you so much for doing this, people at Craig and, and Ann. And it's, it takes a team, but it's really important. We take care of this now so that 20, 30 years from now, it's not a bigger problem. The Barnes Lane is right next to the river and there are nice homes along there and people care about it. But every time we have a flood or an ice jam or that stuff, it needs to be addressed early. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Payne and Commissioner Rolf. I, I agree with both of their comments. I won't repeat them, but I will say that it has been an adventure. I, I said a decade, but it's been more than that. 12 years of, of process. And I think I say that we, because Ann's predecessor, we chased many, many grants over the years and received hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants to get the main project done. And there's been, it's been quite an engineering feat as well and a process. So, and the community of Craig, Craig coming together to agree to move forward and transition from individual systems to a community system. It's been, it's been good. And this is the, as we said, last phase. And Ann, I want to thank you very much for your, your good work on this. Always, always good stuff. No mistakes, rarely a mistake. We'll catch you sometime, Commissioner. Catch you sometime. All right, with all of that, and there is a motion, a second on the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is a board appointment to Canyon Creek Fire District. Good morning, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Connor Fitzpatrick, Lucen Clark County Elections, specifically the Elections Division Supervisor. I bring before you today a ask for a board appointment. On March 7th, we had three of our five trustees for the Canyon Creek Rural Fire District notify both myself and each of you that they had resigned from the Canyon Creek Rural Fire District Board of Trustees. As we were going through this process, we had five people, when I put this memo together, we still have five people who are interested in the position. In order of filing, those names are Wendy C. Smith Adamson, middle initial of C there, Michael Alkeer, James Thomas, Victoria D., and John Keller. The Lucen Clark County Elections Office checked, and they are all registered voters as per a new requirement put in place by the legislature at this last session that in order to hold, quote, "civil office," end quote, you must be registered to vote. And they are also all residents of the Canyon Creek Rural Fire District and therefore are eligible to serve as trustees. Per MCA 733, or 7-33-2106, Section 3, appointments to fill vacancies occurring during the term of office of a trustee must be made by the county governing body. You folks, an appointee shall hold office until the next regular election. In the case of one of these seats, that regular election is in May. In the case of the other two seats, that regular election is in May of 2025. So one of the three appointments will be a short-term appointment. And that person will just hold the seat until May 7th of this year, at which point one of the three people who have filed for the election with us will take that seat. That person who holds the short-term seat could very well come back next year and file for one of the seats that's open for election. Nothing precludes them from doing that. They are just merely a voting member until May 7th. The other two seats are open and are up for regular election in May of 2025. So we don't have to worry about any unexpired terms and people having to stand for election multiple times just to fill out the same seat because they're all up for election in either a very short term or a slightly longer short term thereafter. Beyond that, we have had some public comment come through our office. We have received letters from Edward Grady, Eileen Grady, Judith Ann Vincent, and Virginia Gueye. I believe all the Commissioners also have copies of these letters and comments. So I think we're good there. And then just based on my understanding of Robert's Rules of Order, having been a former student senator and operating under the same rules of order here, if I remember correctly, the County Attorney's Office can confirm whether I am on the right page here. Under Robert's Rules of Order, the Commissioners, or at least in my case, it was student senators, could ask the public questions. Now, the public could decline to answer those questions. But if they would like, they can step up and answer said questions. It is up to their pleasure to answer those questions. And then, of course, up to the Board's pleasure to decide whether they want to ask said questions. That is my understanding of Robert's Rules of Order, which apply here. Beyond that, I believe the Elections Office has done its part, and we will recommend filling all three vacancies, even though it gets a little fun with one of them being a shorter term filled than the other two. If anybody has any questions, more than happy to talk through the, I guess, the math, so to speak. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I will leave it to the Board here.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Any questions for Mr. Fitzpatrick before we move on? Any questions for?
Nope.
I, I do, I do have a question. Are any of the people who filed to be appointed, people who are on the ballot for this, this term?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolf, none of the people who filed for the appointments are on the ballot this year. So we don't have to worry about weirdness happening where they're appointed to one seat, but then they're elected to another seat and trying to figure out which seat they actually get to sit in and all that fun stuff. These are all two very separate pools.
Thank you.
All right. Well, what I'd like to do, Commissioners, with your concurrence here is, as Mr. Fitzpatrick said, those that are putting their names forward, inviting them, if they choose, to come forward and tell us a little bit about themselves. And if they're willing, then stand for any questions that the Commission might have. If they choose not to, that's fine. It's up to you. And then we will open it up for public comment and, and all of that. And then if the Commission is ready, we'll, we'll make a decision. We'll make decisions. Does that sound okay, Commissioners, with you? Okay. And at any time, if you have questions for Mr. Fitzpatrick or there's confusions, confusion or questions for other staff, please feel free to do that. So at this time, candidates, you know who you are. We don't need to pull you forward in any particular order, but if you'd like to come forward and...
...in order presented by Connor. That way we wouldn't have stampede the microphone.
Okay.
If I may make a suggestion.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Uh, yes, so the candidates are in filing order.
Oh, they are in memo there.
So might be a little less chaotic to have them follow that.
Okay. So Wendy's first, please come forward. And if you'd state your name and address for the record, please. And then you're welcome to share anything you'd like with us. And then we may have questions for you. Good morning.
Good mor... Excuse me, good morning Commissioners. My name is Wendy Smith Adamson, and I live on 12421 Lincoln Road West in Canyon Creek. I did prepare some remarks. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak with you today. I'm excited about the opportunity to step into a role that will help my community and specifically my local volunteer fire department. My husband and I moved to Canyon Creek in late 2020. We were blessed to be able to find and purchase our dream home and so early in our lives. My husband, William Adamson, is a new volunteer firefighter at the Canyon Creek Rural Fire District, and he's currently in firefighter one training and wild land training. And while the training is hard, it suits his personality as he is someone who jumps in and helps. The opportunity to be appointed as a trustee on the board for the fire district and hopefully as a treasurer is my way to jump in and help, especially at this time of need with unexpected board vacancies. A little bit about my background. My first job out of high school was working for an independent tax preparer. And I worked there for about 12 years. That was not just a job. It was an education as well. I learned that my giftings were in finances and administration and interestingly enough, teaching, specifically small businesses and how to keep their books organized with an emphasis on yearly tax preparation. I am currently full-time employed, and my title is Director of Operations and Finance. I've worked for this company for over 25 years and counting. This role entails seeing and overseeing a manufacturing business, handling the accounting as a controller, and all tax compliance requirements. I am also the quality assurance representative for the certifying body that we answer to. With all that said, I am a remote worker, but I'm able to get all of these responsibilities handled because of my commitment to getting the job done and the fact that I've built a good team to work with. While I might be a fresh face to this community, I believe that my lack of bias can and will be a benefit for getting this Canyon Creek Rural Fire District running smoothly and staying focused on the tasks at hand. It would be my privilege to serve with my talents. Thank you so much for considering my petition. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much. If you'd stay there, we might have a few questions. I don't know. Any questions, Commissioners, at this time?
Not at this time.
I have a question. In, in the letters of resignation that we received from the three people who retired, each, they, they referenced continual the community members continual, try to incite conflict, discontent, and sabotage. And here's another one. Constant friction, community strife, overbearing micromanagement, and incoherent lectures to the CCRFD board and members. It has become untenable. Recognizing that those issues will have to be dealt with by this, the, the new board members that we're going to appoint, can you talk a little bit about how you intend to deal with that sort of thing?
Number one, I'm not afraid of a challenge. I am used to having to answer to difficult questions and situations, especially with a quality assurance background, auditors and certifying bodies. So it's important for me to find out what the actual bylaws are that we're held to, what the mandate is, and to stay focused on that. The personality is something to manage in a professional setting carefully, but can be managed. And the focus on making sure that we're accomplishing what we're meaning to accomplish despite it being a challenge is where I think this needs to go. I don't have any community... I'm thinking of reputation yet. So there's nothing for people to have any kind of negative assumptions. I want them to get to know me before assumptions are made, and I will win them over.
Thank you for your courage.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you. And there may be some later, if there is.
Sure.
It's up to you whether you want to join us or not up here at the podium. Thank you very much. We'll call up the next person. I think it's Michael, right? Is that on the list? I've, yes, I've got the list of... Yes, it's Michael. Here, sure. I know I only have the first page of that.
It's on the back. It's from the back.
Yeah, I don't know the back page. So, good morning, sir. Welcome. If you'd introduce yourself and tell us your address, that'd be great. And then you're welcome to have the floor. Good morning.
Okay, I gotta press a button here?
Is it green?
Yeah.
The green is what we want to see.
Green's good to go. Okay, my name is Mike Alkeer. I served in the United States Marine Corps and the United States Air Force, both honorable discharges. I was away city with the Fifth Marines. And after that, I worked at a company for 17 years in which I traveled 26 states and covered and made cooling towers and condensers and repaired them. Okay, I moved out here in 2011, and I, I'm renting from the Dagno Farm. I live on the Dagno Ranch. And I'm 100% disabled veteran, but I still have my facilities about me. I'm just kind of other problems. But I see there, you know, I'd like to help the community out if I can. I'm not used to speaking too much. I've been too much military background in me. I can cut to it. You either cut to the BS and get right to the work. And if there's any other questions you can ask, I might not be able to answer them. I might be able to answer them. So I'm open to questions.
Great. Well, you're doing just fine, by the way.
Pardon me?
You're doing just fine, by the way, and welcome. Any questions, Commissioners? No. Please.
I'm always curious as to where people, what they're, where they're from. Where'd you grow up? What did your folks do? Where'd you go to school?
Which is the same kind of climate. I, I came out here because a buddy of mine had cancer. And when I came out here in 2011, I just never went back. I moved out here.
You moved here temporarily. 30 years... I moved here temporarily.
I moved here...
Yep.
In 2011, permanently.
Well, I might repeat the same question that Commissioner Payne said, just that there's been some recent conflict on the board, and it's one of the reasons why there's people resigning from the board, and how, how do you see yourself dealing with conflict on the board and dealing with folk that you may not agree with?
Well, you look, you look at, everybody's got a different personality, everybody's different. Okay, we all got to come together to meet one one common goal, we did the same thing in the service. When you're in a combat unit, you work towards one goal. And everybody's got to put aside their separate uh, personalities, and you work that way.
Thank you. Any other questions commissioners? And it's Alkire, is that how you say it?
Alkire.
Alkire, okay, great, thank you for helping me with the pronunciation. Mr. Alkire, thanks for being here, if there are any further questions, we'll call you back up, but at this time, you're good to go unless you have anything else you want to share.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think Corey D's next, is that correct on my list here?
Nope, James.
Oh, I'm sorry, James Thomas is next, I have, I don't have the same list in front of me, so I'm gonna get, have to get help from Commissioner Payne here, James Thomas is next. Good morning, sir, if you'd introduce yourself for the record.
Good morning, my name is James Thomas, I go by Jim, 8941 Marsh Creek Road in Canyon Creek. A little background on myself, I arrived in Montana in 1981, jumping out of a C-130 over Fort Harrison. Wow, in a parachute, and I haven't left, and I'm never going to leave. Uh, I spent four years in the Army, I spent 20 years with the Helena Police Department. Uh, four of those years was as the administrator of the Sports Services Division, I think you're probably familiar with that. Uh, so to answer what I think the question is going to be about dealing with controversy, that should answer that question. If you know how SSD works. Uh, my last job with the police department, I was a project manager for technology overhaul for public safety in Lewis and Clark County that covered ambulance, law enforcement, and fire, including all rural fire. After my law enforcement career with Helena Police Department, I worked for Patty Grady and the Grady Livestock Company for two years. Uh, and then got, um, I don't know, wanting to get back a little bit in law enforcement, so I was in a instructor at the Law Enforcement Academy out on Sierra Road. Now I'm retired, and I spend way too much time on the Missouri River with a fly rod. Yeah, I know, anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Please, go ahead.
I have been a trustee with the fire board before, I don't have those dates for you, I was actually chairman of the Board of Trustees for the Canyon Creek Fire District at one time.
Great, thank you very much. Any commissioners, any questions for Mr. Thomas?
Not at this time.
I'm just pleased that we've got such high-quality candidates, so, and I really appreciate you folks coming in and talking to us. It's pretty hard for us to sit up here and kind of be able to pick out the right ones, so we appreciate your efforts. And we could talk later on what, what they're eating up there right now.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right. Now, Corey D, thank, sorry.
So I'm Victoria D, but I go by Corey, and I live at 7873 Lost Horse Creek Road. And thank you for the opportunity, and I think it's a great mix of people that have applied, it's wonderful. My experience, I think first and foremost has been, uh, until my husband passed in September, we actually had direct reason to use the medical services for the last three years quite a few times, and I have nothing but utmost admiration for the caliber of that medical care. And very blessed to have them in our community. Secondly, over the years, the last three, I would say, I've tried to stay an engaged citizen by attending as many of the meetings as possible via Zoom or in person, so that I could see firsthand some of the business matters in front of us. And when this opportunity came up, I thought it's time for me to not be sitting on the sidelines, but present myself as one to be considered for being more engaged as a trustee. And my experience has been corporate marketing and corporate sales over the years, and my service, I was Helena Citizens Council member for a few years when we lived in Helena, that's my only civil public arena. Other than that, it's always been not-for-profit boards, but in one instance in particular, speaking to conflict, we had a difficult situation of having to fire the CEO, we had a lot of staff members, some who felt we were making the right decisions, some who felt we weren't, and we had to change our governance model and work with 200 staff members that were wondering what we were doing. Uh, the outcome came out that it was a good outcome, and we resolved that, but I feel that communication and tackling the problems head-on, as we did in that instance, just being direct, whether it's delivering good news or bad news, is the way we need to go. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, questions commissioners, Mr. Payne?
Again, I, as I asked the other folks that are talking to us, uh, the remarks on several of the resignation letters talked about constant friction, community strife, overbearing micromanagement, and incoherent lectures, and will you be able to deal with those things? And because this is way more personal than a 200-member committee, this is, you know, the 12 people who you live very close to, so can you?
And, and I, and I use that example because the staff of this particular organization, it was really a life choice, it wasn't just a job. Uh, they were very invested in the care of the, the children, and I liken that to this community where people that have lived in the community three years, 30 years, are very invested in the community, but most importantly, the proper management of the, the fire department, and what is happening in terms of the development of the staff, the development of the trained firefighters, the medical team, and so I, I, that's the reason I use that example, that I think that there is, that emotion was something that we experienced in that board position as well as the emotion here. And to answer that, I think again, it's going to take, um, strong personality to manage discussion, have people feel that they're heard, but also manage that process so that people feel they're heard, but not feel any one group is overheard, underheard, overmanaged, or undermanaged.
Thank you, Corey.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, anything?
Yeah, one just, uh, you, and I believe you said it, but I didn't catch it, uh, how long have you lived in the, in the general area?
We moved in 2003 from Helena, and we moved here to, from Chicago in 97.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner, I think we're to Mr. Keller, right? Good morning, sir, if you'd introduce yourself for the record, and you have the floor.
Good morning commissioners, thank you so much for considering this. Uh, I am John Keller, I live at 8838 Marsh Creek Road. Um, I am a member of the Canyon Creek Rural Fire District Volunteer Fire Department. I am in my third year, and I have a lot to learn. Uh, I recently received a license for emergency medical responder, and I have helped Corey with her husband's DVD on a few occasions. I have no idea why I'm standing up here when there are so many other better candidates. Um, my background, uh, in terms of employment, uh, I was a program manager with Hewlett Packard, and, um, led teams of engineers for product development and design, uh, responsible for budgets upwards of one to $2 million. So I have experience dealing with individuals, assignments, and, uh, setting goals, um, and trying to reach them. Um, the question on the floor that Commissioner, I will ask you to ask, I will try to answer it and anticipate it. Um, it's always difficult. Um, and what you'll, what I will try to do if I am appointed is to work with the community and always keep in mind our goal. Our goal is to make this fire department a good fire department, a fire department that serves the community and is able to do its job properly with the resources that are available.
Thank you, Mr. Keller, any, any questions?
Again, how long have you lived in the area?
Uh, I'm a relative newcomer commissioner, I've only been here for eight years. Uh, prior to that, I lived in Colorado, and prior to that, uh, I was born and raised in the Detroit area. So that could be a detriment.
I had one other question.
Please, Commissioner.
I, someplace in my notes or someplace, I have this idea in my head that, that you had perhaps wanted to have a shorter-term appointment, or am I thinking about something?
That is correct, Commissioner. Um, I think, uh, Jim and Wendy would be phenomenal candidates for the longer-term positions, given their background and skill level.
Okay, thank you, and I guess my question is, uh, maybe it's for Mr. Fitzpatrick as well. Obviously, they're eligible to, to apply. Do you see any conflict being a, one of the firefighters as well as being on the board, and is there any conflict?
Uh, I see it as an advantage. Uh, from that perspective, I know what we're doing on a day-to-day basis and training, and our, when we have calls and that kind of thing. So I feel like I have a better perspective, uh, for what our needs might be.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hash.
I might jump in, I apologize, and as always, appreciate everyone's volunteering for all of these positions, so I just wanted to make note that there's, um, there may be an issue when we have firefighters also being on the Board of Trustees. It's called the incompatible offices doctrine. There might be some disagreement statewide about this, but I think it's important that the board's aware of it. So generally, that doctrine speaks to when you have two positions that either have supervisory control over one of the other, or that there's the opportunity in which there might inadvertently be a conflict or something to that effect, where, um, the case law talks about trying to avoid those issues. In the context of fire districts and, um, for fire trustees, you have a situation where the trustees are in charge of financing and maintaining what those services are, and so they talk about if there's bylaws that exist about how a fire chief needs to handle, you know, how the district operates or that sort of a thing, there's kind of a conflict where you can also have a firefighter who is in charge of their boss. So that's kind of what the conflict issues come up. Um, as always, I think we have issues when you don't have a lot of people showing up, I mean, we very rarely see this many folks show up, so that's a great thing. So it's kind of with a heavy heart that I'm bringing this point up, but I think it's just something that the board needs to be aware of.
Thank you, Commissioner Payne, did you have a question? Uh, I saw you look like you did.
I'm just, I mean, I understand what you're saying, yeah, yeah, but, um, I didn't have a question.
Okay.
Just appreciative that you could reminds us, there's these, these books, see this?
Yeah. And the case law that goes along with them.
Yep.
So, uh, Mr. Keller, anything else you'd like to add?
Not at this time, commissioners.
Yeah. And, and Mr. Fitzpatrick, I called you out, but if, if there's anything you want to add, you're welcome to do that, thank you, Mr. Keller. Appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, commissioners, I would like to just state that we had looked at them from the, uh, possibility of being a citizen, looking to be on the fireboard rather than from a firefighter or other involved personality to being on the board, so, uh, yeah, that's fascinating to know, Mr. Hash, I appreciate that. Um, so, yeah, I would imagine, uh, should a appointment be made, maybe resignation could be tendered for one item or another, but that is of course up to the individual, and then of course, the initial decision is also up to, uh, the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Hash, thank you for that. Um, it sounds like from a black and white perspective, uh, Mr. Keller's eligible from case law perspective, and from history, there, there has potential for conflict anyway, so, thank you, just wanted to make sure we were clear on that before we moved on.
Another question for, so people file to run for these offices, and are you saying that if a volunteer fireman files to be a trustee, that's, we're gonna throw him out, or they can do it anyway, or how, how would we handle that?
Are you asking Mr. Hash?
I'm asking someone with more knowledge than I, and it could be starting with, uh,
All right, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and then Mr. Hash, how about that, go ahead, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, I'll start from our angle. Uh, our angle is, we're just making sure that they are a registered resident of the area. Um, outside qualifications, we may not know those out the gate. Uh, they could mention to us that they are a member of the Canyon Creek Rural Fire Department, but we're not horribly interested in that on our side of things, uh, we just want to know if you meet the qualification of a elector for the district, which then essentially means you meet the qualifications of being a trustee for the district, and then bring it to you folks, uh, in the case of an appointment, uh, in the case of an election, that could be a question that comes up, uh, for members of the community. Um, and there is a method to challenge a candidate's, um, eligibility, but that goes beyond the elections office itself, uh, that actually can end up in front of a court of law, which I'm personally very happy about, I don't want to be deciding people's eligibility on a whim, uh, if you want to stand for an election, perfect, let's make sure that you are eligible uh, in the district, and then that's all I really need to know. Um, beyond that, though, uh, when we start looking at the wider scope of law outside of Title 13 and Title VII related to elections, uh, that's where Mr. Hash and his expertise comes in.
Good segue, Mr. Hash.
Um, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so I guess the, the answer to the question is, it becomes an issue when someone points out that it's an issue. So either through an election or an appointment, um, those things can happen, there's, I guess, there's not some sort of legal hand that steps in and stops the whole process, so it's, it's generally going to be brought up by either another member on the board or someone within the district, so there was a case, it's, I think it's Zunski V, I have it right here, so apologies. The French Town Rural Fire Department Board of Trustees, and so that's kind of where a lot of this discussion comes from. In that case, it was, um, a member of the community who brought up the issue, and that one, it was the fire chief who was going to sit as the interim. Um, or, it was a fire, it was a trustee who was going to sit as the interim fire chief, and so that's where we see the discussion from the Supreme Court and other cases talking about the incompatible offices doctrine, so, um, I think there's some discussion out there that if you have a firefighter, and they're not the fire chief, there might be that separation. However, there's an enumerated list that the Supreme Court talks about, and so in that situation, you would have a trustee who is in charge and, um, appoints the fire chief, so essentially, you would be someone appointing your boss or able to control the fire chief, who is kind of the, I don't know, they're the chief of the fire district, so that's kind of where that, um, uh, I guess the problematic relationship exists, so, but to answer your question, Commissioner Payne, it, it gets brought up by a member of the community or something like that, so.
So in essence, it's we have that option to appoint Mr. Keller, for example, but just, we're aware that there has potential for conflict, and that could be problematic, it may not be, but it could be.
Particularly in this particular, um, community, which seems somewhat conflict-oriented.
Yes.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and so, uh, the other aspect is the county attorney's office is both the legal advisor for boards of county commissioners, the county and certain special districts, including fire districts and fire service areas, so trying to cover both angles of providing legal advice to both the commissioners and also one of the fire districts out there, so um, certainly, the comment here is that, you know, should the appointment go to, um, uh, Mr. Keller, that there is always then the real risk that then they could be challenged, and that goes through the court process, and so, um.
Thank you, thank you very much, any other questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, and I think we've gone through all of the candidates, right, not missing anybody.
Nice.
All right, thank you, I really appreciate the candidates being here and, uh, being willing to, uh, visit with us today. And with that, we'll open it to public comment, and just a, a note, uh, people are welcome to come forward in no particular order necessarily, please state your name and your address for the record, and, uh, of course, we'll encourage folks to be as, uh, considerate as possible with their comments, I'll leave it at that, and try to stay out of the way. So, public comment, any public comment, please? Good morning.
We have the Republican Fire District. You received a letter from my mom and dad, at three days ago. My father served, was in the signers to keep our fire district. And those people ran through back then, and we got the fire started, we still today, and we're still here. They lose the field here, settles. You received a letter from my mom and dad. Great mind, we support Michael Alkar, we have a resume. We support Cory D, we have her in the letter. We also today support Lillian. The Board of Trustees has called several laws. What say they provide? Provide a safe environment. This is in our bylaws, this is the bylaws. We love the public dogs. We provide a safe environment for individuals that are respected, heard, and known. We respect diverse opinions that need to find a solution based on common ground. We encourage creative approaches to engage public participation. We value informed decision making and take personal responsibility, repeat that, take personal responsibility. We educate and educate and educate itself. To understand that, Board of Trustees has written bylaws that are written as will be. They have credit card laws, they have the field card laws. They're all public documents, they've been made available to people. They've been updated, we need to read like that, build a bond with fire company and the board of trustees. We believe that we special public dialogue foster healthy community relationships. Understanding and promise. We know it's considered and respect the natural tension created by collaboration, change, and transition. Yes, anchor to its small community. You can talk about the school board, you can talk about the region, you can talk about public work, you can talk about the community, and they're going to have their opinions. And the, at the end of the day, we need to work. Just like they are talking about this at Ranford. They're here to argue about the water. Who has control of it? At the end of the day, they work it out. We follow rules and guidelines to the D C D. Each meeting, home noises are made at the pancake fire station, the pancake store, the June is posted. We've been, the board has been very involved, Zoomy. The minutes are available now at the secretary's office. They're filed. You have any questions? Again, my parents support Michael, Cory D, and Miss Lillian Adams. You also received a letter from Cory D yesterday, we support Michael, Cory, and Lillian Adams. He's here today, he has a support, Cory, Michael, and Lillian.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Further public comment? Further public comment? Good morning.
Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Hash, good morning. Uh, my name's Jonathan Cunningham. I'm at two forty eight Grand Street in Marysville. I am the current acting fire chief of the Canyon Creek Rural Fire District. And I'm just going to keep it uh very brief. Um, I'd like to show my support for Lillian Adamson, Jim Thomas, Cory D, and John Keller. Um, not going to reiterate a bunch of comments that's already gone on through this this meeting. But I will say that with those four candidates, we can move past um the drama that has been going on constantly. Um, those four candidates. Excuse me. Those four candidates um can bring in a bunch of good to this department that needs to happen. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Further public comment? Please, just come come forward if you have further comment. Anybody else? Anybody else? Going once.
There is a person named Rocky in the audience who may have pertinent information, but he is so bashful. You can't hardly get him to stand up. Rocky, would you give us some guidance? I mean, you've worked with all these people. You're not part of the problem. You're a bystander and we need your knowledge and the microphone.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board. My name is Rocky Infanger. I am currently the fire chief for Wolf Creek Craig Fire Service Area. Um, we border Canyon Creek, um, twenty one oh seven Craig River Road.
Do you need to talk into the microphone closer, Rocky? Thank you.
I can yell.
The lady over there has to transcribble this and before I start to cross.
Infanger, I N F A N G E R. Yep. So do you have questions for me?
Chief, thank you for coming up. You you don't have to if you if you choose not to, but it sounds like Commissioner Payne has a question for you.
Um, I I what is your position with the fire council? Are you?
I serve on several different boards. Um, I am, um, like I said, I have. I hold a position of fire chief for the Wolf Creek Craig Fire Service Area. Um, I'm the Secretary of Treasure for Lewis and Clark Rural Fire Council. I'm vice chair for the Lewis and or the Local Emergency Planning Committee. And I chair uh organization, nonprofit called Fire Safe Montana.
Thank you. Um, as holding all those positions, and I assume you've been doing this for a number of years. Um, do you, are there times when there are conflicts on the boards of trustees of the various fire districts? Have you seen that in the past?
Um, other, not very often. I, you know, in my fire service area, I have one of my firefighters serves on that board.
Okay.
Uh, we have a very clear understanding. My first question when we're on the scene is, in what capacity are you speaking to me? If you're speaking to me as a trustee, that's one thing. If you're speaking to me as my firefighter, that's another. I need to know clear right up front. I I don't have time for a lot of that, but we have an understanding in our board, um, kind of what our roles are. We know what our. We we, you know, don't cross lanes.
And have you, another question?
Please, Commissioner.
How often do you see where there is a board with five people on it? And either three or four have resigned, leaving one person on that board. How often do you see that happen?
I have not generally seen that happen. I I'm sure it happens out there somewhere, but within our area, I have never, that I recall. I mean, it could have happened.
Okay.
I call it.
In this situation, we've had three resignations. And I think the other person, a guy named Scott, who's, I can't, he is one we appointed last
year.
Year at this time, or last July, wasn't it? The middle of the year?
I remember exactly, it was last year.
And so I I'm concerned about the ability to settle their differences and get the job done, rather than letting a bully run everybody off if they don't agree with him. That's my perception. I didn't attend those meetings, but could that happen?
But from my standpoint, the bottom line is we have customers out there and we need to take care of our customers, and that's the bottom line. And we need to figure out how to work together to get that done. That's the only thing that should matter is that our customers are taken care of in um the best way that that can happen. Um, equipment, training, everything else. Um, the infighting, there's no place for that. Um, you know, we have to look at our customers. That's that's why we're there. We wouldn't be there if we didn't have customers. So.
On another matter, um, the Canyon Creek Fire District has um two hundred and sixty nine voters or registered voters within that district. And I understand at the last election, there were sixty six votes for Mr. Grady and sixty four votes for Stephen Harp. And so of the uh two hundred and sixty nine people eligible to vote, only about a hundred and thirty voted. Is, do you see that as common? Is that the way our fire districts are run? Or do their citizens say, I don't want any part of this, or by golly, I need to get involved, at least go out and vote? Could you talk about that for me, Rocky?
I couldn't begin to tell you why people vote or don't vote. Um, you know, I I really don't know. I know that I think a lot of fire districts struggle on getting people to serve on those boards. Um, you know, there's, there's not, I don't believe there's a lot of elections in the county, because there isn't a lot of running against one another. If you get one person, you know, and and basically, I think they're appointed by acclamation or something like that, the, you know, there. There's not a lot of interest until there's smoke in the air, you know, or or your taxes are going up or or something like that. Uh, it it's difficult to get folks to serve. It's difficult to get volunteers to serve. We are all lacking in that.
But isn't that why it's so important to have people who do not think of themselves as the king, just because they've lived there so long? But rather that they have to work together as a a team? Um, or this could happen again?
It very well could. Um, I don't attend their meetings. I don't know exactly. I hear say, and and I try to keep an open mind to everything. So I, you know, can it happen again? Yeah, you know, may this get better? Possibly, hopefully. You know, I I don't, I try not to get involved in things I don't need to be involved in.
Do you know anything about the auxiliary to the Canyon Creek Fire Department?
No.
I'm wondering, is there anybody in our group? Oh, there is a lady back there. Thank you for answering my questions, Rocky.
Yep.
Chief, thank you very much for being here. Oh, oh, Rocky, wait, before we do that, Commissioner Rolfe has a question for you. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
Commissioner Rolfe.
Just like a drill, real drilled out on this uh question about potential conflict between a board a board member and a volunteer fireman. Um, we've got, what, sixteen, seventeen just volunteer fire departments here in the county? What percentage of them uh would have members of the board who are also volunteers?
I I don't know the makeup of all the boards. Um, I know East Valley is probably made up mostly of firefighters. They're bored.
It's not uncommon, is it?
No, I I, you know, there's, again, like I said, there's not a lot of interest until things are going sideways and then then everybody wants to speak up. But um, I think in society today, everybody wants somebody to take care of their problems and they're more than willing for whoever's willing to step up, step up. They, we have difficulty too. Uh, I don't know the last time we've had an election, because we haven't had more than one person run for that position. So there's no need to have an election. Um, I I think it's difficult to get people involved sometimes. Some people just want to kind of stand back and until things go sideways, and then they want everybody to come help. So, thank you.
It's only important if it's your house burning down?
I guess it's a matter of how you look at it. I have a community. They're all important to me. They're, mine is no more important than anybody else's. So.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Anything else, Commissioner?
That's that's it for right now.
All right, thank you. Please, if you'd give us your name and address for the record, please. Welcome.
Welcome. Uh, Crystal Cunningham, two four eight Grand Street in Marysville.
And are you related to a former speaker? Oh, I'm sorry.
Is he my better half? Okay, yes, thank you. I am. Um, speaking of the auxiliary, um, I have recently um taken over as, I guess, chairperson or whatever you want to call it of the auxiliary. It is a five oh one C three, uh, private, completely separate from the fire department. Um, we do fundraising and um get funds and grants um to help the firefighters get what they need that the fire department cannot pay for or what the trustees don't think is necessary.
Okay, may I ask a question?
Please.
The reason I wanted to talk to somebody from the auxiliary is I'm, I I think this is a local issue. It's a local board, and the way this is controlled is from the voters. Could the auxiliary do some sort of a get out the vote con, I mean, and I don't care if they're gonna, you know, vote for who, it isn't who they're going to vote for, but they need to participate. So the people who pay the taxes are actually electing the people who spend those taxes. And that's exactly what this Board of Trustees does. Is this something that you could take back to your other auxiliary members in, what's the election in May? And maybe you could go out and put up, I don't know how to do it, but I'm sure you have creative people. But of the um two hundred and sixty nine people who are eligible to vote, it would be good if we had two hundred of them.
I agree.
Or more. So.
Yeah, we could, I could take that back for sure.
And I'm hoping not only you, but the other members of this community who care about this for crying out loud. Ruth Anna, I'm looking at you. You go out and get people involved in this important aspect. We all know how important our volunteer fire departments are. They're the lifeblood. And nobody, as I said earlier, nobody really cares unless the fire is coming over the hill and taking out your haymeadow and your house.
Yeah. And if I could speak kind of on uh the fire company and step aside of the auxiliary and just speak as a fire company member, if that's okay?
Sure.
Um, I'm the captain of the fire department. Um, I am the EMS coordinator. So I'm the one that usually went out to Steve Dees and took care of him. Um, I can, I can think I can speak on behalf of all our, all the firefighters that were very frustrated. Um, we've stuck by this conflict. Um, I've been on the fire department six years. And ever since I got there, um, this has been happening. It was a really rough couple of years to begin with. I came from an ambulance service that had kind of similar issues, where eventually we were driven to, we quit, all of us, all fifteen members of the ambulance service quit and started our own ambulance service, because we were tired of the conflict. And that ambulance service is still going strong today, and the other ambulance services does not exist anymore. Um, and we, as firefighters, are just really tired of this. We want to serve our community. That's what we're there for. We're there to give them fire protection. We're there to give them medical protection. And that's what people should be thinking about. So on behalf of the firefighters, I just beg you to choose people that will help us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anything else, Commissioners? All right, uh, we we conjured up some uh further public comment and we'll continue that. If there's any further public comment, please come forward, state your name again for the record, so that we know. You are?
My name is Mike Alkar, and I'm applicant for uh one of the positions. And I I'm just here to help represent the community and the people. As we know, we're living in rough times with taxes and everything else. We're just, be on this board. You've got to be able to restrict where your money goes and not just overspend and underspend. You've got to be able to take care of my finances, your finances, and your finances. You got to be able to put them in the best place you can. And you've got to be able to form good judgment, whether you're black, white, green, purple, or whatever. So that's what I have to say. All I want to do is help the community out. There's no part for it, but that needs to be looked at. It just can't say, well, we got to go out. We've got to look at everything we're doing. I mean, times are tough. And a a fire department does not have, our fire department does not have the capacity as the hell in the fire department, because we're not big enough. We're a small fire department. But we need to keep up with the growth. You understand what I'm saying? I wanted to go in and cut it out, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here again today. Any further public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. I want to.
Uh, if you give us your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. Judith Ann Vincent, um. Judith Ann Vincent, um, 70, God, I can't even remember my address. 7608 Lost Horse Creek Road. Anyway, I just would like to thank everybody for stepping forward. And the five people who put their name on the list to represent the board. I was on the board probably 10 years ago, 12 years ago. I stepped away and then I got back involved and we, we've been speaking about the controversy. And I don't think it's something that we can just push under the rug. There has been controversy. We tried to work through that. I am more than willing with a group of other people to step forward. And even at that point when there was controversy, we tried to step forward. So Candace, thank you for mentioning the auxiliary. I haven't been a member of the auxiliary for a long time, but I would be willing to work with Ms. Cunningham to make that happen. And I look forward to coming together with a totally new board and see where we can go from this. We've been, the people that served on the board, many of them, including myself, were there a long time. I made the decision to stay, step away so that someone else could fill that void. Now I'm, could possibly be ready to step back in. I did run for the office. I put my name in and was last May to be on the board and was, I was too controversial maybe. So some set. Anyway, I didn't think so. That's my personal opinion. I'm not a fighter. I'm, I would like to have the community come together. And I would like to be a part of helping the community come together. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? Further public comment? Okay, we're going to close public comment. Thank you all very much. Commissioners, discussion? Anything you'd like to chat about?
Just one thought, it looks like we maybe should, if we're going to move forward, maybe appoint the one person for the short term. And then two people for the, for the longer term. Does that make sense?
Yes, so we'd take up the short term one first.
So in separate motions?
Correct. And just for explanation, for those that may not be familiar with what we're talking about, there is an election coming in May and there is one appointment that needs to be filled until that election in May. The other two appointments would, would go until next May's election. So we'll take the first appointment first, the shorter term one. So commissioners, discussion? Anything else you'd like to talk about?
I, I really would. The point brought up by Mr. Alkire about the importance of balancing the interests. You've got the taxpayers out there who are going to pay for this, but then you've got the volunteer fire department. We, we do this every day and I know it's hard to believe, but sometime, usually it's me and Tom against Andy. Sometimes it's me and Andy against Tom. And every once in a while, those two will gang up on me and by golly, I, I just am just appalled when they do that. I think the same thing happens on the Canyon Creek Board of Trustees. We each have our own opinion as to where we're supposed to go, what we're supposed to do. And we don't agree. That's why there are an odd number of people on these boards. And it is important for the person who doesn't get their way to be able to step back and say, next, just move on. If we can't get five people on that board of trustees who are willing to say, okay, I'll step back and live to fight another day. But this infighting and, and keep, remind, bringing things up time after time after time, these guys get really cranky when I do that. But, so I'm really encouraging the people who are going to be appointed to this board to think about that. And I'm also going to encourage, and when I talked about the auxiliary getting the board, the, the vote out, it wasn't, it's just not the auxiliary. Judith Ann, there is no reason you can't call everybody you've ever known in Canyon Creek and say, get your butt down there and get, get some voting done. Each one of you, that, you need to do that. This is your community. You need all the people voting or you end up with maybe four or five people running the whole show. There, okay, I won't talk to.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments?
I've got maybe just one other question as we go forward. Of the five people who have put their name in, are any of them on the ballot? For, I don't believe as I recall that any of them were on the ballot.
No, they're not. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolf, yes, none of the people who have applied for appointment are on the ballot this year. I have three candidates for the ballot who are, well, Max Eskildsen, Ellen Eskildsen and Barbara Nye, who's one of the individuals who resigned. She has to have her name removed from the ballot, but we were beyond the withdrawal period. So unfortunately, the election must go on. But then we have our five individuals here that have stepped forward today. So we have two separate pools of candidates that are entirely.
So the three people that have, that, that are on there now have, have resigned, that are going to be on the ballot have resigned?
One of the people on the ballot has resigned. And since she is, we're with, let me try this again, I apologize. We're beyond the withdrawal period. So theoretically, Barbara Nye could win her seat back. Now, of course, what she does with it, once she has won it, she could resign and then we are back to meetings such as this one again. Or she could choose to hold the seat since she won it in election. It is up to her to decide that in this scenario. Now, of course, it could also be that she doesn't win her seat. There are three candidates with two seats up. So somebody is going to go home without a seat. And that's the reality of an election. That's how it goes, unfortunately. Now, we always applaud when individuals step forward and they're interested in serving their community. As Chief Infanger said, usually you only get one person per seat in each of these fire districts. And oftentimes when someone steps down because they're looking to retire, such as Baxendale. A trustee resigned last year. She had, yeah, last summer. She had been there for a very long time and decided, you know, I'm going to retire and not have to worry too much about a board anymore. And the Baxendale Fire District found an individual who was interested in serving, couldn't strike the balance between what they're going through in their life with work and everything else, but also being able to serve the board in a capacity that they felt served the interests of their community. So they stepped down and then we had to appoint someone else. But beyond that, our fire districts are usually pretty stable on the boards. There usually isn't an election. So I applaud the folks of Canyon Creek who have stepped forward, willing to throw their hat in the ring and be in that realm of public service. So it's wild seeing a board of five people coming forward for three appointments when I could have a second Canyon Creek Fire District Board with these folks. So anyway, long-winded answer to your question. Three folks for the election are separate from the five folks.
If I might just follow up. So there are two people, there are two open positions for this year. There would be, there will be three positions that are up next year.
Chair, Commissioner Rolf, there will actually only be two positions up next year because the, the short-term position that is up currently will serve for about a month and a half until the May 7th and then it will be filled at the election. So that's, this one's kind of a weird one because usually when we have people resign, it's because their term is another year or two out, but this one is very quick.
Two positions that'll be on the ballot this year?
Yes, and one of them will.
One of, one of those people probably will stay and one of them potentially might resign, resign or could decide to stay.
Chair, Commissioner Rolf, so as it sits right now, there are two remaining people on the board. Commissioner, trustee Grady and trustee Burke. Scott Burke's seat is up at this election. So after May 7th, he is no longer on the board. Of the three that we have to appoint, one of those three is also up at this election. And then the other two seats that we're appointing today are up at the May 2025 election. So there is a divide there. Otherwise, usually we would see trustee who was appointed having to run for an unexpired term due to how statute is set up. But in this case, there's really two short terms. One is a very short term until May of this year. And then the other two are short term until May of next year.
Got it. Okay, so we're three, three positions. One's very short term until May and that's the one we're going to talk about first. So commissioners, further discussion or questions?
You had a mouse under your chair.
Yes, so, any further discussion or questions? Okay, how about, would you like to, either of you to offer a candidate forward for the short-term seat that will expire at the election in May? The motion to appoint?
Well, let me put forward a name. I would put forward for the, for the short-term name, Victoria Corey D.
I would second that.
Move to second it to appoint Victoria Corey D. for the short-term appointment until the May election. Commissioners, how about discussion?
Um, I, this, I think this will, oh, excuse me, Chairman. I think this temporary appointment is going to be key to getting the whole board working together again. And so it, I think it takes a little more ability to smooth things out and get people talking to each other. And I, I really think that Corey has the kind of experience in bringing people together that we will need. And I know it's very short term, but it, it's a very important part to play in this, this muddled mess. So I, I really strongly agree that I think Corey would be an excellent candidate for the key, short-term position. And then we will expect her to continue to, you know, work in another position to help her community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Comment?
I, I just agree with what Commissioner Payne has said. I think she gives her an opportunity to take a look at the position a little bit more and see if, and we'll have to see what happens after that, after the election.
And I have a, a list of my faves out of the group that we talked to. Or the, I, I think we have a good list, several people that are competent and ready to, ready to serve. I appreciate the candidates coming forward and discussing that. And Steve was one of them, so I am happy to support this motion. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, so Corey D. has pointed to the short-term appointment until May. The next one, commissioners, is the next motion that we're going to talk about or the next appointment that we're going to talk about is the longer-term appointment until next May.
We want to look at them individually or in a pair or?
Probably, probably look at them individually, shouldn't.
I think, I think we should probably individually, so.
So may I move a candidate?
Yes, you may.
I move that we consider James Thomas as a, as an appointed trustee for the, the next position.
Second. Move and seconded to appoint Mr. Thomas, appointment that would end next May. Any discussion about that?
Um, I think his, his work as the, with law enforcement and, and his background as a trustee for this particular fire department may hopefully will balance out some of the other, the folks that will be on this board. And I sense that he has dealt with controversy before in, in dealing with, with law enforcement. And the, he's got a background in technology and, and I know that's not necessarily, you wouldn't think of that as important for firefighting, but from what I've seen from the fire council and, and, and from what I've learned from young people, we need to move forward with, with the new technology. And I, I think he would be, his knowledge and background would be helpful.
Thank you. Any comments?
No, it looks like good background and been in the area for a while, kind of familiar with the area. His, his experience at the Law Enforcement Academy is positive. And he's a former member of the board, which might make some continuity there as well.
All right, Mr. Thomas on my list as well. Anything further? All in favor of pointing Mr. Thomas to a seat that will expire next, 2025, May of 2025? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Congratulations. All right.
Congratulations.
We have one more appointment. What is your pleasure?
I would propose we, I can't think of the language.
Move to appoint?
Thank you. Move to appoint Wendy C. Smith-Adamsen as the second candidate for the term ending May of 2025. I, I think she would be a good addition as we talked about earlier. Jim is, he's, he's been in the community for a long time and she hasn't. Therefore, she is less likely to come in with, with ideas that may lead her in one direction or another. And she has a background in financing and organization. I've, I, I've talked with people in the community and I, I, it is my understanding she's perceived as pretty middle of the road and knows how to get things done. So I nominate her.
Thank you, Commissioner. Comment?
Second.
They moved and seconded to appoint.
These guys must be up to something because they never agree with.
Wendy Adamsen to the term that will expire next May, 2025. Further discussion, commissioners?
No, I think I, I, I agree with Commissioner Payne. And the background, the finance background is a, is an asset. Seemed to have a lot of support from the, the people that have, were willing to stand, stand up and say something. And frankly, all three of the, of, all, all five of the candidates are strong candidates.
Yeah.
And, and were our, our good people to add to the, the board. I don't think there was a, really a negative about any of them in my, my view. But I would go for that. I would go along with that.
Thank you, and I would agree with those comments. We had five good candidates and any five would serve well, I think. And I would encourage the other two to consider elections coming forward. I'm going to support this motion as well. And I would just say to the entire group that's here, we just spent hour and a half so far in this meeting, talking about things. And it would be my preference that we aren't here. I would much rather see the citizens of Canyon Creek electing their representatives in their own community and those representatives be, being able to serve. in their own community and those representatives be, being able to serve without involving the county commission. We're here for this purpose. We'll do our duty, but I would prefer not to have to do this and not to have to choose people from your community to do this. It would be much better if we can work together and we have a board that is stable, functional, and does the work as Mr. Infinger said, I think, several people said, I'm sorry if I can't remember everybody, but you know, you should serve the people and get the job done and make sure that the it's a functional fire district and to protect folks and we, from my estimation, we should not be involved unless we have to be. And at this point, we have to be. So I encourage the community to take this opportunity, pull it together and make sure that we're not involved in the future, hopefully. So with that, I will support the motion. Anything further, commissioners? All, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 We have our three appointees. I really appreciate all five of you coming forward. Thank you very much. I think everyone was a competent person that could serve on the board. So thank you very much. And with that, and apologies to Mr. Fosbender, but we've been sitting our, our bladders and our tails, been sitting for a long time. So we're going to take a five-minute break. Actually, it's about 32, 33 after. We'll come back at 4:22.
What?
10:40, 10:40. Thank you very much.
We shall return, right? That was really cool, having all those people come in. I mean, it, it just. Yeah, and everybody heard it. And I mean, this was clearly a public.
Preliminary subdivision approval for the Fosbender Minor Subdivision. Mr. McNally, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Greg McNally with the Community Development and Planning Department. Ms. Liston is trying to get our presentation up on the screen. For some reason, it's showing here, but not on your screens. I don't know if it's in front of you at all. I don't think it is. So if she can maybe resolve that for us. I was going to show you some slides today, but that you have before you today, request from the applicant, Mr. Mike Fosbender, for extension of his preliminary plat approval for the Fosbender Minor Subdivision project. This is a preliminary plat approval that was granted by the Board of County Commissioners on March 22nd, 2016, for two lots, each for one single family dwelling, and one lot for one common space for a homeowners association, which includes a man-made lake, boat dock, boat ramp, parking lot, and community wastewater treatment system. This project is located north of and adjacent to Munger Road and west of and adjacent to Bowie Boulevard. Commissioners, this project, as, as I indicated, has, was approved on, originally on March 22nd, 2016, subject to 14 conditions of approval. The applicant has not been able to complete the required conditions of approval for the subdivision in a timely manner and therefore has requested an extension of the preliminary plat approval. Conditions of approval generally include DEQ approval for water, wastewater, and stormwater improvements and insulation, fire protection source and, and RID for maintenance, a weed management plan and weed-free certification, preliminary engineering reports and exactions for off-site road impacts. That's our proportional share requirements. Address assignments, mailboxes and utility installation, payment of taxes, the creation of a plat and its review for filing. Because we have not received a final plat yet application, planning staff doesn't have any documentation of the completion of these conditions. However, the applicant has indicated in their request for the extension that he does have an agreement with Grassland Subdivision for fire protection. That's for an off-site fire protection source that's adjacent. An engineer has developed a calculation of the pro-rata share cost for the impacts to off-site roads. Weed plan has been completed and the engineer has indicated to the applicant that they can get DEQ approval in 60 days. The current subdivision regulations do not include criteria for determining the length of extensions of preliminary plat approvals. And prior extensions for projects have varied from six months to five years. The staff is recommending an extension until March 22nd, 2025. That would be a one-year extension. It does exceed the applicant's stated goal of project completion by July or August of 2024. This extension, if granted, would equate to a total preliminary plat approval of nine years for this project. Staff has prepared an extension agreement for the subdivision. The applicant has signed that extension agreement and it is before you and included in your packet. And I don't believe we are managed to get the screens up here to, to be able to illustrate.
We do have our packets here, so.
So I will refer you to some of the information in your packet. You can see on the second page, the vicinity map that shows the property is shaped like a C, just adjacent to Munger and Bowie Boulevard. You'll note there are five lots along Bowie Boulevard. That is the Waterski Mania subdivision. Those five lots are not a part of this particular project. So I just wanted to illustrate that for you and that would have been shown on my screen. So this is a, a lot that's separate and apart from those five. The fourth page is the preliminary plat of this project. And you'll see it includes and shows those, those five lots in Waterski Mania that I just showed, but they are adjacent. So that's why they're shown here on the plat. But the lots are, the, the two lots are at the bottom corner, bottom corner of the project. The third lot would encompass the lake itself, which is on the, makes up the length of this particular subdivision, as well as a portion of it that abuts Bowie Boulevard. Those are the three lots that are involved in this particular project. And it's difficult to see on the document that I've given you because of the size we're looking at it. And I'm so apologize, but on the screen, you would have been pretty clear for you. And if you have any questions, I'm available. The applicant is available as well.
Mr. McNally, just to make sure we're full understanding, 2016 was, was the original preliminary plat approval. And then there's been extensions, one, two, I can't remember, two extensions since then?
Yes, we've granted two extensions. This is the third.
You may have just said that I didn't, if I didn't hear. This, this would be the third extension. Okay. And on the application, we have the, a copy of the applicant's application. It's listed. Those are the remaining, essentially the remaining things that have to be completed for final plat, right? That, that we're, we've been talking about.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is according to the applicant. This is what is included in his application.
Okay.
Again, when, when, when the applicant submits final plat approval.
Then we get proof of.
Then you'll get proof of completion of all 14 of the, the conditions of approval that are required for this project.
Okay, and for those that are applicable, we'll have staff go out and affirm that.
Yes.
Like usual.
Correct. Thank you.
Just wanted to talk about to make sure if anybody's watching, they understand how it works. Commissioners, questions for Mr. McNally? Questions for Mr. McNally at this time? Anything? Okay. Mr. Fosbender, would you be willing to come up and you can tell us about your, your project, where you are, why the extension maybe, and there might be a few questions from the commissioners. Welcome.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Staff, Mike Fosbender, 3930 Bowie Boulevard. I just want to thank Greg too for his work on this. I apologize that I'm here. A year ago, I was here saying I guarantee I'll have this done within the year. And it was just a lot more project than I anticipated getting the cars moved and just some life things that came up, but we're really close. I don't know if you've had a chance to drive out there, but almost all the cars are moved. I probably have five days left to finish that. Ryan has said the 60 days, he's pretty sure you can get through the DEQ. So those are the two really big ones that we have left to do and we're within a couple of months of being able to do those.
Okay. Commissioners, questions, please? Commissioner Payne, would you like to start?
Commissioner Payne would like to start. I'm concerned about the complaints we have had regarding your 3930 Bowie Boulevard. The latest one says it's been a thousand days since the complaint was filed. And I'm, I'm concerned about that, particularly when I'm wondering where are, where did you put the 250 cars that you've gotten rid of? Did you put them over by Green Meadow Drive? Because I'm getting complaints from that part of our community that that is not a junkyard. That is your son's backyard? Is that what it is?
No. It's deeded to my brother right now.
Okay, I, I didn't understand that.
Yeah, we just haven't. I bought the property. He purchased it and then I bought it from him, but he's still on the deed. We haven't.
So he still owns.
Technically, he's still the owner.
Okay. Is he a licensed vehicle dealer?
No, I am.
But you don't own the property, is that correct?
Well, technically, no, yes.
Technically, yeah, got the laws. See these things? This is what we live by. And when people transfer property, there has to be a deed and it is recorded and that person becomes responsible for things like taxes and obeying the law and not keeping a bunch of vehicles in sight of the neighbors. Greg, I sent you some photographs of pictures taken yesterday. I believe they were from Munger Road and I, I sent them to Mr. Platt. Could we pull those up? And I'm, I'm sure that the neighborhood over there by the ski, the Waterski Mania, those are valuable, impressive homes. And perhaps the ones up in this neck of the woods are more rural and maybe less influential. But those people care about vehicles that are draining fluids into the ground that goes into their groundwater. They're concerned about the vermin and the trash and the all the negative parts of having 250 cars moved into the lot right north of you. Do you understand my, my concerns?
I do.
Okay, because it is our job to look out for all of the citizens in our community. And that includes the groundwater and I don't know, fire possibilities from having dead cars and dead batteries out there. So Greg, were you able to pull those up?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, the screen on the showing right now is currently, I believe, Flo's screen, I believe, but not our screen yet, that I have over control over here yet. So.
So Flo, could you pull those up?
They're trying to.
Oh, they're not there yet.
Transfer it over to you or to.
Well, so could you respond? Or did you put that 250 cars?
Where did I? On this property, the one that you have the pictures of. It's at 46 City View.
And do you have a fence around it?
Not a privacy fence. I have a contractor lined up to do that. He's just had issues that hasn't been able to get out there and work on it.
You know what? A year ago, you told us that you had a contractor lined up to put up a fence. And it's a year now. And I, I'm concerned. My, my son used to volunteer to help wash the dishes when he needed money. And I'd say that's fine. And I'd go in the kitchen, the dishes are all gone. Well, he put them in the oven. That's not the same as getting the dishes done. It's moving them from here to here. And it is not acceptable in my eyes. Of course, I'm only one commissioner and what the heck can I do? People file complaints against your operations. And when they're, that people in our junk vehicle remediation program, they do what they can, but their hands are pretty well tied. So meanwhile, you put in another junkyard in another part of the valley, which lowers the value of these people's homes because nobody wants to look at a bunch of dead cars. Could you respond?
Sure.
Thank you. I apologize if I get all fired up.
No, it's okay. I understand. I have been through numerous DEQ complaints and dealt with the DEQ and by definition, junk cars, like I, I had one, the 250 cars that were at Munger, I had one just a year and a half ago that I went through and passed the inspection. So.
So basically, there's nothing that the public can do to get you to play by the rules.
No, I'm playing.
You do play by the rules, but the rules don't have any teeth. Is that?
Partially, they don't have any teeth, but I'm still going to put up a fence. I, I will.
This year?
I'm riding on my, he's, he's supposed to be putting up a gate at my storage units too. I probably just need to find another contractor. I do have another person who has said that he would be willing to help get the fence up too. So I will get a fence up there. But technically, they're not junk cars, but I, I'm not going to argue that. I will get them fenced.
You live on Bowie Lane?
I do.
So if I could get my redneck brother to haul 50 ratty old cars, that's still run, but they're ratty, and park them next to your property, wouldn't that cause you some heartburn?
I could see that would cause some people heartburn. I wouldn't have an issue with it.
If you were trying to sell, and I assume you're going to try to sell these lots?
So again, I mean, people complain, but lots have sold out there. So personally, I wouldn't have an issue. I can understand how you have heartburn over it and how neighbors do. I.
Do you, do you understand the concept that your private property rights only extend until they impact my private property rights or the private property rights of your next door neighbor?
I do.
Okay, and that involves if you're say, running a feedlot, like smell of the cow poop is inundating the nursing home next door. That's a problem, even if you don't physically. There are things that are beyond the control of us personally because of what our neighbors are doing.
I understand.
How long have you lived in this community, Mike?
In this house or this?
No, in this community.
In Helena?
In Lewis and Clark County, our home.
My entire life, I've lived in Lewis and Clark County.
That's what I thought. So you are aware that we are the caretakers of this beautiful place we live. And if we see people who are disparaging this beautiful place that we live in, it causes me, and I would think as a long-term resident, it, it'll cause you concerns about the way you're going to leave this place when you die. We're stewards of the land and putting 250 cars, whether they're junk or whether they're not, it's outrageous and our constituents. I hear about this every, I go to the grocery store, they yell at me, they tell me to come out and sit on their deck and I can look at the new car collection out there. I am wandering around letting you know that I'm not happy about a one-year extension. How would you feel about a six-month extension?
I would be okay with it.
Well, I haven't talked this over with the powers that be, but first of all, last year, you promised us you would have a fence up. And I know it's not beyond your, I mean, you didn't mean to do it. But as long as you are signing the front of the check, the buck stops with you. It's your responsibility.
It is. I'm not making excuses. I just didn't get it done. I apologize.
Like my son didn't get the dishes done. Oops, I didn't mean to put them in the oven there, Mom.
I've put forth a lot of effort though. I mean.
Hauling them all the way across the county, yes. May I? Oh.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rolf, anything you'd like to ask Mr. Fosbender?
Would, would it be reasonable to do it in a six-month period?
Yeah.
You could definitely get it done this time?
Yeah.
And I, and I know that things come up, but, and I knew, do you know you've moved a lot of cars at, at the, at the Bowie Boulevard? And I'm sure your neighbors are starting to show a little bit of relief.
They are. I've gotten several text messages.
But in my little over three years of being in this position, this has been the one biggest complaint I've gotten. But in my little over three years of being in this position, this has been the one biggest complaint I've gotten. The whole time I've been here. So I'd really like to see that if you could commit to six, six months and get it done, I'd really appreciate it.
I would do that.
Okay.
Mr. Fasbender, I, I'd. Would support that as well. However, I just want to make sure with you and, um, you know, things happen. Um, I'd much rather. Do a year and not be back here than do six months and six months from now be back here having the same discussion, so. One or the other, but uh, if six months would light a fire under it and move things along or. Uh, cause, and I'm talking about lighting a fire under final plat. I'd like to, you know, we entered into this in sixteen. Uh, after we enter into a preliminary plat together, then in my mind, we're your partner. We want to get this project done. Any developer out there, we want to get the, we want to get to final plat so we can get that done and off the books and moving forward. So I'm, that's what I'm hoping for. Uh, and of course, all the nuances that have been discussed already, we don't need to discuss that again, but. So I, I just ask again, six months, I don't want to be back here.
I guess the only thing out of my control is the DEQ.
Yeah.
For a while, they were, they were kicking them back. I, Ryan said sixty days, but. I mean, if they happen to kick it back once or twice, that would throw us past the six, but.
Yeah, uh, Mr. McNally, any insight on some of that maybe?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you for the question. I- in some cases, some conditions of approval can. Set an applicant back. DEQ is one of those, those uh, uh, conditions that they have to complete. It requires to go to the state to, to get that approval. The applicant has to go to the state to get that approval. And sometimes those approvals can take longer or they can require additional information. That maybe wasn't submitted with the original application. So there can be significant back and forth. Um, so we do see, uh, if, if an applicant hasn't. Achieved their DEQ approval yet, that that can sometimes take some time. I, sixty days, I thought, as Mr. Fasbender noted in his application was a little ambitious. I, I thought, um, I don't see DEQ typically move that quickly, but uh, they have. Done it before. I mean, uh, it's possible, so, um, but yeah, there are situations at which they could be a little longer. And certainly, uh, conditions such as maybe getting a survey done or a plat done. Um, there's several people that have, uh, review those things, not only our survey review committee, but our examining land surveyor. Uh, the surveyor that's drafting the surveyor has to create the miles. There can be some back and forth to make sure that that document is accurate and correct. As well. So there's some time delays involved in, in reviewing those conditions. If you approve it, a six-month extension. We will work with the applicant, make sure they're one, fully aware of what all the conditions are. And, and just maybe have a quick. Brief down of what all those conditions are, how, how to best get those met. Um, if we were to have to come back and, and request another extension. Uh, hopefully, there's been some progress. I would probably speak to that as much as the applicant would, uh, as to what's been done, uh, going forward.
Hey, you're, Mr. Fasbender, you're comfortable with that?
I'd be okay with the six months if. Like Greg said, if we can't get the DEQ done, if that's all that we have left, if we could come back and. Get the extension.
Mr. Chair. May I? It, my thought being. I'm sure you will make every effort to get it done in six months, but I know. Things don't always go, but that way you have. You can go in and pound on the table at the DEQ and say, hey, come on, we gotta get the, guys, this cranky old commissioner and she's on my, well, anyway. But then you could, I mean, it gives, it helps support your efforts with another bureaucracy. But it also then gives us an update as to progress you've made. And. And I really don't mind having another six months opportunity. Or another opportunity in six months for you to come up here and say, well, I've gotten A, B, C, D, E, F, and G done, but I still have H. Okay, then that's progress and I will feel. Better about it and will be able to field the questions of your fellow residents when they accost me at the grocery store saying, what the hell are you going to do about those cars? And they do.
All right, Commissioner, you've convinced me.
All right.
Commissioner Rolfe.
That's uh, um. Six months and a few days would be the end of September. Does that sound right?
September sound okay?
I. Yep.
Is that okay with you?
Yes, sir.
Greg?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I would, uh, allude that six months from March twenty-second, twenty, twenty, uh. Which is when this would expire, twenty twenty-four. Could go till September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
We may have snow by then. We may have snow by September.
All right, September twenty-second, what we're talking. All right. All right, um, M- Mr. Fasbender, anything else you'd like to add? And Mr. McNally as well? Anything else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, just in looking at the agreement that's before you, that's already been signed by Mr. Fasbender for a one-year extension. We do these agreements, um, simply because the statute requires the commissioner and the applicant to agree to an extension. I've heard both. Uh, I've heard the applicant agree to six months here. We've got a year one before you, so the document here. Uh, clause number four, preliminary subdivision approval, the parties agree that the preliminary subdivision approval of the Fasbender minor subdivision is extended until. And it says currently March twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. I would imagine you're discussing amending that to September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. And then, uh, termination of this agreement, which is clause twelve. Uh, termination states this agreement terminates March twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Commission's discussing and the applicant has agreed to, uh, this agreement terminating September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you for those, uh. Recommended amendments. And when it's time, we will make sure they're part of that. Uh, anything else? Anything, Mr. Hash, that you'd like to add?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I guess, just if, um, the document's already been signed by Mr. Fasbender and I think the amendments. And the agreement's pretty clear, so obviously a new document's just going to need to be created, so.
Okay. Thank you.
We have these magic computers now. We can do this.
All right. And, uh, we, we forced Mr. Plant to be here, and we didn't force you, but we asked you to be here just in case we had questions. Appreciate you being here, sorry.
I would ask him a question.
Oh, would you like to ask him a question?
Certainly, we are here to educate and.
Mr. Fasbender, thank you very much. If there's anything else, please add it now. Uh, if not, we'll let you sit back down and we'll. We'll call up our next, uh.
Victim. I mean, participant.
I did not say that. Participant. Good morning, sir. Please introduce yourself for the rec.
Mr. Commissioner, or Mr.
Chairman.
Mr. Hunthausen. Commissioner Payne, Commissioner Rolfe. I'm Jay Plant, Lewis and Clark Public Health. Environmental health specialist.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you for coming in, Mr. Plant.
You're welcome.
And thank you for. Your, um. Input in the last couple of days when we've been considering all this. How many? And I, I'm not sure how, what to call this collection of cars. It. It's not a car collection. It's not a. It is a junk vehicle community decay area. Okay, and this, this is the one on Bowie Boulevard. And now it is spreading over. Into my backyard. And I'm not happy. So if I sign a complaint, would that be helpful? Regarding the issue on, I think it's on Munger and. C- City View.
City View, yes. Any complaint we receive is documented and, and recorded. Added to our collection. But, um, DEQ also receives a number of complaints. Which obviously our county, Lewis and Clark County is contracted by DEQ to. Administer the junk vehicle program. Motor recycling, motor vehicle recycling. And disposal, um, as part of the motor vehicle. Disposal and recycling act from back in the seventies. Um, but yes, those would all be. Valuable towards any enforcement action we can take.
Is. There any? I mean, we, we all pay, uh, property taxes and. Um, personal property taxes on our vehicle. Is Mr. Fasbender, or maybe this is outside of the scope of your, I can ask him. Does he have to pay taxes on those two hundred and fifty vehicles that are out there unlicensed?
That I do not know.
Okay, well. Thinking about trying to get this under control, and it may not happen today, but our future is becoming more and more congested with junk vehicles.
Yes.
So. Should the DEQ ever decide they're going to deal with this? What would, can you walk me through the procedure?
Yes, um, as far as. Our enforcement part of this, or even the state. A junk vehicle, just so you know the definition, the state definition of junk vehicle would be any vehicle that is wrecked, dismantled. Missing parts. Um, unlicensed. Incapable of being driven. In a safe manner.
Are these conjunctive or? Is it or or and?
It's all.
All.
Yes, and.
If it is.
Yes.
Not licensed.
Yes, so not one or the other. It's all. Five things. The other one being visible from a public roadway, six feet above the center line of a public road. And so. You can have a vehicle which Mr. Fasbender has. That looks bad, but it may not meet the definition of junk vehicle. Um, now, yes, we have determined on all his properties that he does have junk vehicles. Now, DEQ has allowed him to basically hide those vehicles behind a vehicle that does not meet the definition shielding, which is not actually the lawful. Method of shielding. Which we've disputed that with DEQ, so. Um, problem with this situation is a lot of these vehicles are being worked on. They move. You know, within a time.
A lot of them are not being worked on. They're sitting out there.
Correct.
Oh, sorry.
Which DEQ stance was, well, okay, by the time we get to court, um, those vehicles could. Move. And, you know, that, they've dealt with that on other properties, but. So, yeah.
Do you find your job somewhat frustrating?
Uh, at times, yes.
How many other piles of? Of. Valuable vehicles are there in the county that don't belong? Oh, look at what we found.
Our valley is a hodgepodge of, of this, which. You know, we've. At the health department, always has stands where we're not going out looking for this, put your blinders on and we're more complaint-driven.
Okay.
And with our ordinance, which was changed back in the nineties or the two thousands. We've been able to, you know, tackle some of these, but yeah, it's, there are a lot of loopholes in the law. So it does get frustrating, but, uh, you deal with what you can.
Do you have any idea as to the value of these? For example, that blue car that's sitting right there by that fence post. I saw, I was out there in August having a beer on the back deck of this house and so. I can verify that that, that really is out there.
Yeah.
On his brother's ground.
What the value of that is right now, I can't tell, but what it'll be worth when it's fixed up and sold is more than. That it would be sitting there, of, of course, but. And the, the biggest issue with some of these lots like this one is. Is it a wrecking facility? Is our auto parts being sold on this property? Which if they are, it should be, it has to be a licensed wrecking facility, which such as Scenarius Auto. Um, Cennis, those types of things. They pay a hundred dollars a year. And they have to have a fence. Pretty simple. And we do have a lot of people who. Don't want to do that. So it's a constant fight, but. Yes, it, if you have four or more vehicles and you're selling parts, technically. Gray area in a lot of this, if you're selling vehicles, those should be shielded. If they're, those cars are changed. Parts taken off, putting on another car and sold, that technically could be a wrecking facility.
So how would we go about giving you some teeth to enforce this? Is it county ordinance?
Uh, we, well, we do have a county ordinance, which is one of the better ones in the state. Um, we do follow the state. Junk vehicle act or, you know, state code, state law.
Certainly.
So, but, um. I don't know. That would be a question. We would need to talk about, I guess.
Mr. Hash. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so, uh, just a quick add. Mr. Plant was talking about four vehicles, so under the statutes, it has to be four junk vehicles. And again, junk vehicle has a very specific statutory definition. So I think that's where you start getting into the, I think, the wrecking facility and the shielding language. As far as the county role, we do have a community decay ordinance. Generally, community decay ordinances speak to rubble, debris, refuse. That is also spelled out in state statute. That's not a discretionary determination made by a county. It's created through the legislature. So. From a county perspective, there's the ability to look at. I guess, properties that have refused debris, you know, I think example is indoor furniture just hanging out outside. You know, that's probably a good example of what would fall under the community decay. Mr. Plant talked about from. The viewpoint of the public roads, that also applies to our community decay ordinance. So it has to be accessible to the public and again, affect the public, so. The community decay ordinance generally. Can't get used, you know, if someone's got some private roads or it's, you know, it's pushed on the backside of their property and, you know, a couple other people see it. I understand their perspective on that, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that triggers county involvement under a community decay.
Okay.
Again, our community decay ordinance. It incorporates junk vehicles. But it also remains with the same statutory definition of what a junk vehicle is. So you have. Different. I guess, items fall under different jurisdictions and if it's county or if it's state. And again, all of this is derived from statutory definitions of what those are, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hash.
So.
Commissioner Payne.
I've got, uh, Greg, would you or? People who are controlling the magic of our computers, would you scroll forward? I know there are photographs and they were. Designated as taken from Munger Road or from. Green Meadow or from, and they're clearly. Visible. From those roads, so it isn't just. The people living right next door.
So we still don't have anything on our screens. You know that, right?
I do.
Oh, you do, yeah. Oh, I don't have anything on my screen.
But turn around, Eddie.
Yeah, I saw it. I did. I'm just letting them know I don't have it on my screen.
Okay, well, I'll bet there's four vehicles there that would. Could be defined as junk. And they were junk when they were on the east side of. The interstate, just as they're junk now.
Yeah. And, and those vehicles should be shielded. Whether a separate facility to shield them or the whole thing, but.
And I believe the title on these had the. Road that they were taken from on some of them, anyway.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, I believe this would be City View.
Okay.
Still. I have a City View. Um, I have one labeled from Guthrie.
Pull that up.
But, okay, see the blue car? That is right there and in an earlier photograph, that car was sitting by itself. So if you scroll back down, you'll see that blue car. Okay, never mind.
That car there?
Yeah, oh, and look at those dead mobile homes.
Commissioner Payne, if that vehicle were to be a junk vehicle, it would need to meet all those. Items. If it had a, a valid license, it was read, you know, licensed.
Then it's not.
We can't touch it.
Okay.
Which.
I'm not complaining about you doing your job. Uh, it's just.
Make sure you know that that, yeah, it could, it is probably junk, but.
You know, in my younger days, I, I drove a car that didn't look that much different than that when it was black. Okay, I have no more questions.
Commissioner Payne.
Yes.
You're done?
I'm done.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Plant, for you, Commissioner Rolfe?
No, I think the point's made.
Yeah, I think the point is thoroughly made. Thank you very much for being here. It's. Long morning waiting. Thank you.
No, no problem. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Appreciate the work you do out there. Mr. Hash, thank you for your comments. Thanks, Mr. McNally. And again, we were talking, we're talking about an extension. Um, and again, we were talking, we're talking about an extension agreement with Mr. Fasbender. And now we're talking about six months. Mr. McNally, uh, offered some language. If we agree with that language, I think that would be language that we include in our, uh, motion, which would amend the agreement and it will be reprinted with those new dates, which we're talking about September twenty-second. Um, and prior to that, Ms. Mr. Fasbender, I'll give you the last word if you want it before we make a decision. I, a lot talked about there, so, uh.
Just real quick, I wanted on the record, I don't sell parts. So that's.
Okay.
I mean, I get asked all the time, hey, do you want to sell parts? And I said, I can sell you a whole car, but I can't sell.
Can I ask you, where do you get all these cars?
Mr. Payne, please go through the chair. Hey, would you like to speak?
One more question, just as a point of.
Please, go ahead.
If you go out and find them and bring them to our community, or are they?
No, they're here. It's, I, yeah, people call me and say, hey, you want to buy this car? There's a auction in town that sells, or insurance vehicles.
Yeah, um, what is a, a vehicle like that worth?
Well, for instance, that Camry that you were.
Yeah, the blue one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At auction, it's probably between five hundred thousand dollars and fixed. It's around three.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
And I sold, I've been selling two hundred cars a year the last several years. So it's not like they're just sitting there. I mean, some of them are, you could probably go out and find pictures and say, hey, this one's been set. And I let stuff get stagnant, but.
That blue one's been there.
It just got moved out about a year ago.
About a year ago? Yep. Okay. No more questions. I will.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fasbender. All right, how about public comment? Any public comment on this item? Public comments? Any further public comment? All right, hearing non-commissioners, please, a motion, Mr. Mr. Rolfe.
Um, Mr. Mr. Chair, I would move to amend the proposed agreement, uh, as suggested by Mr. McNally to, uh, have a deadline of September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to amend the agreement, uh, that was presented today from one year down to six months, which is September twenty-second. And, um, assuming that you're talking about, um, asking him to change that document and all the places that need to be changed in order to make the dates work.
Yes.
As was presented by Mr. McNally. I think we understand that. Everybody okay with that in a second? It's okay with that? All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Fasbender, for, for being here today and working with us. All right, we are at that time in the meeting.
Separate motion for beyond the amendment to accept the whole documents?
No, I think we, we did it. It's all good.
They intended, they intended to have a completed document that is, that has an end, end date of September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, we're all good. All right. So we're at the time in the meeting where we will accept public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission, but not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I apologize. I was going to bring this up.
You'd state your name and address for the record again, please.
Thirty-nine thirty Bowie Boulevard. Um, is there anything we can do about speed control on Munger? We've got, the posted speed limit is twenty-five and I promise there's people that go flying by, they're doing fifty. So sometimes it's trucks and trailer, trucks and horse trailers too, that if one of my kids or a pet ran out, there's no, that way they would stop. We, uh, right now I own the road across and, um, the last few years Doug Erickson's been bringing out a grader and we fix in the road. And the last, the last time I said, I just want it to get full of potholes so people can drive that fast, but I don't know if there's any options for speed bumps or.
Thank you for the, thank you for the public comment. Um, I appreciate that. And since you're the only one here, um, we, we normally just take public comment and move on, but I will respond to two things. One is, uh, appreciate bringing it to our attention. What we'll do is work with, uh, our public works staff as well as our law enforcement, uh, folks and bring the issue up to them and, and then they will probably, uh, follow up from their perspective or make recommendations about how they might, might be able to improve the situation. Um, and we'll go from there.
Sure, thank you.
So, thank you very much. Yeah.
It's, it's your road. It's not a public road.
I own it. It's public easement through it, at least I think.
Is it? Okay, cause this, we don't know if it's a county road or not.
Right, so prior to any, we're going, we'll ask the people that can bring back recommendations to us about what, how and how we might move forward, just as I said. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Personally, I like the idea of the potholes being speed bumps. That's.
Okay, any further public comment? Uh, we hear none. Commissioners, with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much.